October fifteenth meeting, briefing meeting of the West Jordan City Planning Commission. All commissioners are present except Commissioner Ammon Allen. May be stuck in traffic. We will begin by reviewing the minutes, or the, excuse me, the agenda briefly. We are scheduled to approve the minutes for the October first meeting. That's item number one. Item number two is to approve the meeting schedule for 2025. Number three is the public hearing for Holiday Oil on Fallwater Drive. Number four is public hearing for Copper Meadows. Plan. So any questions or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none. Anybody want to comment on the, or ask questions about the meeting calendar for 2025? Can we vote on that now, or do we need to hold off to the regular meeting?
Yeah, just wait for the main meeting, yeah.
Let's hear a briefing next on the Holiday Oil proposal. Mark?
Yeah, just real quick. Yeah, so this is a new Holiday Oil gas station that's going in on the corner of Fallwater Drive and 7800 South. So this will be on the west side of the Mountain View Corridor, one of the few commercial businesses on that side. So this will actually be the first going in of what's called the Coldstream Commons. This was kind of the a secondary commercial area of the Highlands Master Plan. So Smiths was, the Smiths at 56 and 78th was kind of the main commercial area. And this was, this Coldstream Commons was kind of the secondary one on the west side of the highway. So this is now the first business going in there. So they'll have a, a gas station with a convenience store, gas pumps, and an automatic car wash. And they're doing something a little bit unique at this one with a drive-through on the south side. So what that is, in the packet and on the agenda languid, it lists the conditional use permit for a fast food restaurant. So the reason we chose the fast food restaurant was because that was the category that was closest to what they want to do there. So more specifically, what they want to do is it's basically a drive-through retail. So pretty much any item in the convenience store, people can just kind of drive up, order what they want, clerk will go get it for them, and then they'll drive on and move on with their day. So it's kind of a new concept. But yeah, the, the fast food restaurant was kind of the closest use that we had in the code to that kind of a business model. So. Then, other than that, some of the features they're putting in. There's a multi-use trail going in on the front. So that'll eventually connect to the trail that's running through the middle of the Gladstone Apartments at some point. So this is kind of the, the next part of that chain. Yeah, so the, the applications that you'll be considering tonight is a preliminary site plan, a preliminary major subdivision for the road dedication. There's just a small sliver on the corner that they need to dedicate. And then, of course, conditional use permit for the drive-through.
We received a letter from the Garbett community, an email from Garbett Community that purportedly has the support of over 230 concerned neighbors. Are you prepared to address their concerns during the regular meeting?
Just make sure you acknowledge it during the public hearing, so.
Any question, more questions from the commissioners? Okay, item number four on the agenda is Copper Meadows. Taylor?
Thank you, Chair. Copper Meadows, we've got three applications on the agenda tonight. General Plan Amendment, Master Development Plan in Agreement, and a rezone. We looked at this previously last year, ended up getting reminded back through the process. It's quite a bit of a different project than you saw last time. And because of that, that's why staff recommendation changed. And have any questions you might have?
The only question I have is, I have vague recollections of a meeting 10 or 11 months ago where one of the major issues was the 200 acre rule for planned developments. And the, we have a letter that came in late today, also from a concerned resident there that speaks of that issue again. So you want to say more about that now or later?
Oh, we can do both. I don't think it's that big of an issue because the code gives the council the ability to approve the PC at any acreage. And this project is sandwiched in between 600 acres to the north and 600 acres to the south of PC. So if you look at it in context, it's 70 acres in addition to 1100 acres. But the city council, even if it was by itself, has the authority to approve that change if they, so being appropriate.
Do you have a chance to review the, the letter?
Yes.
You're prepared, prepared to defend yourself?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I thought you would be. Commissioners, questions? Okay. Do we have training tonight? Denise Steck?
Thank you. I'm happy to join you tonight and give you a little bit of training on impact fees and what they do for the city and how they're calculated and kind of some history on them. So some of you sat through most of this training before, so I apologize. It will be a repeat, but I do see some new faces. So looking forward to getting to know you better. Um, let's see here. All right, so impact fees. Impact fees are complained about a lot by developers and applauded by residents that are, are in the city currently because residents say development should pay for development. And sometimes it's confusing as to what that means. So impact fees mean that new growth pays for that increasing demand on services. We'll show you an example on the next slide. I think I did. I can't remember which slide I did it on. But I'll show you an example of how they're calculated, what they do, and, and how we utilize them. The payments are required for new development to provide new and expanded public infrastructure to serve development. So we have seven impact fees right now. They take a lot of accounting because they have to be treated separately and special. We have parks. They're only paid by residential development because that's who uses a park. Police, fire, roads, water, sewer, and storm water. And the water, I'm sorry, the sewer impact fee has paid for and will continue to pay for a portion of the expansion of the sewer treatment plant from South Valley Water Reclamation Facility. So, which is also in our city. This is what I was saying. So this is a new slide, but this kind of shows you how an impact fee study occurs and what kind of information is evaluated. So this is a pretend example with pretend numbers. So let's pretend that our current service level right now is we have one soccer field, which is 1.86 acres per field for every 5,000 single-family or multifamily residential units. Right? So we think, all right, that soccer field serves 5,000 residential units. The cost to construct a new soccer field is a million dollars. That would be just for the turf and grading and sprinkler systems and everything that goes in so that it can be played on. Does not include the maintenance or ongoing maintenance of the soccer field. It could be a scoreboard, could be all those things, right? Everything to make it become the soccer field. And then there's also land that is needed to be purchased for the soccer field. Right now, land is about $450,000 to $550,000 an acre is the fair market value right now. And so a soccer field estimate would be about $1.75 million to establish one soccer field for every 5,000 homes. And so if you've got that in your city currently, then for every home that goes in, you need to collect $300 from that home so that after you've got 5,000 homes that have contributed, you can build another soccer field because then it will need to be serving them. So that's how impact fee studies occur. We look at our current service levels. How many acres of parks do we have for every residential unit at the time the study is done? How many storage, millions of storage, gallons of storage do we have for water? How many miles of sewer line do we have? How many road miles do we have? And then it's evaluated based on what is your current service level at the time of the study? And then how do we bring that forward to any kind of new development? So impact fees can sway if you get ahead in your service levels. So if we were to increase service levels without changing our impact fee study, then new development won't be paying for the full impact, right? So we need to keep up on those studies. Our previous impact fee study had not been done for about seven years. We just completed it two year, a year ago and adopted new fees this last year with the contract saying that we will review these impact fees every one to two years so that we make sure that we stay on top of those. Any questions about that? Okay. So how are they used? They're only allowed to be used for brick and mortar, which is why I put bricks and concrete up here, right? Brick and mortar only. It can only be a fire station or a fire truck or a police station. It can't be police cars. They don't hit the threshold for that capitalization. Whereas fire engines are typically over $700,000 each. So establishing a fire station requires that kind of capital investment. Sewer treatment plants, stormwater basins, those kinds of things. They can include the purchase of land and the development of the initial product or service. But then after that, they're not eligible for any kind of contribution following that. We can include impact fees or impact fee credits if a development decides that they want to give you something in excess of what they would contribute. So for example, we, an example that just came to the council last week was a development that said, we want to build a much larger park than would have been required under your current service level. So if it's a million and a half dollar park that would have been put in with this development, which they would have been contributing to an impact fees, they said they will build a $4 million park, but we want to give them credit for their impact fees or not force them to pay them. So while they're contributing $1.5 million, they're really doing $4.5 million. That can be done through a development reimbursement agreement. Impact fees can never be used for staffing. It can never be used for operational costs or recovery of those. Some of our current projects for impact fees right now. We're doing all of the development in our new parks. So Sycamores Park, the Ronwood Park, all of that development, the Wheels Park, all of those are all done. We also just issued a bond, a sales tax revenue bond for $12 million to construct some new soccer fields out in Ronwood Park area. And to also do Phase Three of the Wheels Park area and some other amenities in Ronwood Park. All of those were intended to be paid by new development. However, we're not collecting it as quickly as we need to put the improvement in. So we're issued the debt, and in exchange for the issuance of debt, impact fees will pay for the debt. So we'll pay with the bond or debt for the $12 million of improvements. And then impact fees, as we collect them, will pay the debt service on the bond. Right now, the police and fire impact fees are being saved because we will need to put another fire station on the west side. And that will include a substation as well. So all of the debt for the current fire stations has been paid off. And we are currently saving impact fees for when we construct a new fire station. We have also purchased land for that fire station using impact fee money. And the land will just be held until such time as we construct on it. Some roads that we're constructing using impact fees, they're not 100% of the construction because sometimes, like 1300 West or 7800 South widensings, both of those projects were current roads. But because development is requiring that we upsize them or we widen them or we add some improvements to them because of development, impact fees will contribute a portion of the construction, and then the city will take on the rest. It's a portion of the pedestrian bridge at 7800 South, a portion of another pedestrian bridge at 70th South. Any new traffic signal installations, any environmental studies or master plans or impact fee studies, and then some development reimbursements. So if we ask a developer to put in the upsizing as part of their current construction for future development, then we will reimburse them and collect the impact fees from that future development. Some of the utility projects that are using impact fees are the Zone One Cemetery Storage Tank because that is adding capacity so that future development can be used in other tanks. So in your mind, you might think, well, Zone One is this, this west side, right? It's the area that's already developed. How can you collect impact fees and contribute to that storage? But because we're adding that storage, it relieves the pressure off other storage tanks in newer areas, which will then allow current development to utilize that storage. So we're kind of exchanging it. We also had to have debt service on a water storage project from a Series 2021 bond. The sewer projects, we have our 1300 West sewer upgrades, 7800 South upgrades. We did a large $10 million sewer expansion out in the southwest quadrant. And debt service to the sewer capacity increase at the sewer treatment plant. And then stormwater, we're doing projects at Ronwood Park and 4800 South Barney's Creek Colbert. So you can see impact fees are critical to adding infrastructure into our community. And, and we are collecting, when new development does come in, we are collecting those impact fees so that development does pay for development. Impact fee analysis in 2023 was done by LRB Public Finance Advisors, and they will continue to review our impact fees on an annual or semi-annual basis. We just adopted new impact fees and they became effective on January 1st of this year. The only one we did not update was the road impact fee, and that's because we didn't complete the transportation master plan at the, in time to update the mass, to update the impact fee. However, that's been done, and the study's underway for a new impact fee to be evaluated for roads. And we're looking forward to that because we have lots of road needs. So this is just, the next few slides, I'm sure they're in your packet, so I'm just going to kind of flip through them quickly. But these are the current impact fees under the new study. So you can see when a single-family home is permitted, they pay $4,423 for every unit to go in the park impact fee fund. And then we build new parks with it. $4,399 unit for multifamily housing. And again, that is contributing towards that as well. The police impact fee is pretty low, but it, it increased a lot. It was only $34 before. So it was pretty, it was undervalued at the time. We are now collecting $371 and $434 per unit for each of those. And you'll see that the evaluation, right? You're looking at parks where multifamily has a lower impact fee than single-family because of the land use, right? The amount of land that they're participating in. Whereas police impact fees are based on service calls. So you can see that their impact fee for a multifamily is higher because they utilize that service more. Okay? So when you think about how those are calculated, you can kind of go, why is that more? Or why is that less? It really has to do with the service level and how they participate in that. Fire impact fee, same thing. You'll see more calls for service for EMS and multifamily than you do in single-family homes. And, and then commercial office and industrial have per thousand square foot calculations. The water impact fee is really based on what kind of water meter is installed on the property. So most single-family units have a three-quarter inch meter. There have been times in the past where a single-family home, mostly the custom homes, have said, well, we want more water pressure, so we're going to put in a one-inch meter. But they're going to need to pay for the impact of adding that to the meter system because we need to replace the meter. We need storage for the kind of water that they think they're going to use, that kind of thing. Sewer impact fee is also based on the meter size, and it's really based on the water meter size because what goes in as water usually comes out as something that's liquid, right? So that's where the sewer impact fee comes from. And the stormwater impact fee is based on impervious surface. So how much land did they settle, so to speak, that will not be absorbing the same kind of stormwater it would in its natural state? And it's based on a per acre value. Okay, that's it for me, but I would be happy to answer any questions about impact fees or how they're. Hi, Mayor. I want to speak in that microphone? Is that one horrible? Oh, sorry. You should have told me before now. I'm done.
You sounded fine up here.
Okay, ready? I'm just kidding.
Mayor, try your other ear. I have a question.
Yes.
Will the states' drive for affordable housing have any impact on impact fees?
You know, that's a very good question. And the state has, developers have come to us, right? And they said, well, if you were not charging impact fees or building permit fees, we could reduce the cost of the housing. The market drives the cost of the housing. It isn't the city's small portion of impact fees or development fees. As long as cities are calculating those fees based on development, paying for development, I don't believe that the legislature and even the push for affordable housing will respond to that. But when a city or, well, its municipalities don't calculate those impact fees fairly or correctly, then there's an issue. And so we've seen both sides throughout the nation, right, with impact fees. But Commissioner, when you're right, that there is definite pressure on cities to participate in assisting in affordable housing. But we don't build homes. What we do is we build, we provide services, and they're services that are free to the community. And so the profit margin in that is just, it's not our profit margin. We're not making a profit on any of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatch?
I think I asked this question last year. On the impact fees, you said they hadn't been updated for seven years. Is that correct?
Uh huh.
So for those building, or those approved plans that were, are in the works, we didn't go back and adjust their fees based on these new valuations. So we're underwater on those seven, whatever, the difference, differences between what they were then and what they are now.
That is true. So if, so you have to spend the impact fees within a seven-year period of time. So you can't just collect it and sit on it, right? So we're kind of under the gun right now. We just paid off our last fire station. So now I'm collecting fire and police impact fees over the next seven years. I better have a fire station under construction, right? So I know that it's either that or, and, and this has happened. I have actually worked for a city where we did this, where we decided not to build another fire station and police substation. It didn't, there wasn't a demand for it based on what actually ended up developing over that seven-year period of time. And so we decided to refund. So that was fun. We had to find all the developers and give them back all their money. Interestingly, it's not actually the homeowner that got all the refund. It was the builder that got the refund. But that, you're right, we have to spend it within a seven-year period. Most of our impact fees are upside down. So our water impact fee is very far upside down. I would have to collect for 20 years in order to get it back up. Sewer is upside down. Stormwater is healthy, and we have projects on the list for those. Parks has been healthy, but we're spending it quickly on Ronwood Park. And roads has been healthy, but again, we're, we've got projects, especially that 7800 South widening is going to take a pretty significant bite out of that. So we've been very responsible about keeping three to four years in our bank at the very, very most. But some of them are upside down, and we're collecting in the future.
Thank you. That helps.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service. I know that you do spend a lot of time doing this for not very much money. So we appreciate your time and your expertise.
Thank you very much. We will adjourn until 6:00 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock. This is the October fifteenth meeting of the West Jordan City Planning and zoning commission. All commissioners are present. We will begin by reviewing and approving the minutes of the October 1st, 2024 planning meeting. Is there any discussion or questions about the minutes? Commissioner Allen?
I thought the minutes were well put together and motioned to approve them.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will second that motion.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item number two on the agenda is to approve the 2025 meeting schedule. Are there any questions or comments about the schedule? Commissioner Hatch.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agendas, dates, I'm tired, date of the agenda for 2025.
Commissioner Hollingsworth.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next agenda item, number three, is public hearing with final action by the planning commission for Holiday Oil. I would invite Brent Neal to the microphone.
All right, thank you. Yeah, my name is Brent Neal with Holiday Oil, and we're excited to offer another service in West Jordan. We have several stores already here and happy to answer any questions you might have toward the project.
We need you to tell us more about the project. Kind of give us a sketch of what you're doing there and why you're doing it and how you're doing it.
Yeah, so Holiday Oil is a gas station, so we're planning to do a convenience store. It's on the, if it's in front of you or people behind can see it up there. So it'll be a gas station with eight fuel dispensers, so 16 fueling pumps, and then with a car wash. Yep, right there. And we've been working with the Peterson Group that owns the rest of the property, where we'll have some shared accesses off of Fall Water as well as 7800 South. And we feel that will help mitigate some of the traffic concerns and things like that, just to get around not only our property, but whatever the other property owner decides to do with their property as far as build out. But we've been working with staff probably over two years now, so we're at the point of site plan and approval. So yeah, we're, we're excited.
Are there any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Neal? Commissioner Allen.
There was a comment or question that came in that I'm hoping you could just answer now for us. Frankly, it doesn't really apply at the end of the day as to whether or not this gets approved. But just a question on the capability of the site to, to have this kind of a use, right? So a question about the number of gas stations, the number of this kind of thing in the area. I assume you've gone through the process and you wouldn't be building this if you didn't think it was going to be profitable.
Correct. Yeah, we, we looked at this property and it's for residents and the, I mean, not just the current residents, but growth along 7800 South out to Bacchus Highway. And as people continue to go down Mountain View as that project expands, we're, you know, right next to the future freeway that people can hit us. And also the growth across the street. I know that's a planned commercial. So we feel, you know, we've done traffic studies and there's definitely the traffic count there that could support a gas station.
I see no other questions, so Mr. Neal will just, just miss you, but invite you back if we need to in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Presenting for the city will be Mark Forsyth.
All right, thank you. Fast forwarding through here, so, so I'll just kind of briefly go over the zoning, the future land use. So the site where this is located is just on the corner of Fall Water Drive and 7800 Southwest of the Mountain View Corridor. It's located in an SC2 zone. This is kind of one of the few on the west side of, of Mountain View Corridor, and the future land use map is similarly designates for community commercial. So an SC2 zone is a commercial zone, usually intended for things like gas stations, restaurants, retail, that kind of thing. And a little bit of history on this is, this area is also master planned as a commercial area in the Highlands Master Plan that was adopted by the city back in 2012. So this is really just kind of the first of many commercial uses that will be going kind of in that area in pink, as you can see on the map there. But as far as the uses go, there's a, there's a few uses that they'll be doing here, which involves a gas station, a convenience store, and an automatic car wash. All three of those are permitted uses in the SC2 zone. The only use that is a conditional use that will be considered by the conditional use permit tonight is the drive-through. And so that pertains to a, what can be described as a drive-through retail. So they'll be using this to basically offer items that are in the convenience store for sale through a drive-through. So it's, it's not actually a fast food restaurant. The only reason we were using a fast food restaurant designation is that it's the only land use type similar enough to this kind of new business model. So anyway, just wanted to clear that up. So looking at the traffic flow and the access, they've got some pretty good access to a couple of high-intensity roads. So 7800 South is an arterial road, and they'll have one access there. So this access was actually established a couple of years ago through a cross-access easement that was recorded. So this was anticipation in both the widening of 7800 South and some of the commercial businesses that would be coming in here with Holiday Oil being the first. So, so this was really kind of situated to meet the separation requirements from the intersection of Fall Water Drive and 7800 South. That will become a signalized intersection. And then the road widening project itself is going to enhance 7800 South with two through lanes in each direction, so four total, a left turn lane that'll be enhanced and to allow more traffic onto Fall Water Drive, and then bike lanes on each side and a shoulder. So, so there's quite a bit going into that project, but just wanted to provide that context. And then the other accesses will be on Fall Water Drive, which is a collector road. So the, the north access, that'll be right in, right out, just because of the extended right turn lane, again, for that signalized intersection that's coming in, and a couple of changes such as a striped median and things like that. So, and then the south access, that will be multi-directional, so left turn, right turn. This was also part of the, the cross-access easement that was recorded two years ago. So there were two, the one on the north and this one, again, anticipating future commercial development in that area and really trying to consolidate the accesses so we don't get a proliferation of multiple accesses onto those roads. So you can kind of see here on the map, that right in, right out. So I should point out too, that there's also going to be a concrete median going in the middle of 7800 South. So again, another reason for the right in, right out designation, and then the two on Fall Water Drive there. So another thing I should point out too is they'll be providing a multi-use trail. This will be 12 feet, 12-foot wide asphalt trail there on the north side. You can kind of see there in red. So this was required by the, the Trail's Master Plan. This will actually connect eventually, once the entirety of the commercial property develops, to the trail that is currently running through the middle of the Gladstone Apartments. So this is kind of the, the tail end of that, that trail chain. So when they were designing this, there were a few issues that we needed to work out here. One of those was that with trails, we do try to keep those separated from major arterials to the greatest extent possible, just to kind of keep pedestrians and traffic separated for more comfort. But we also had to manage the wash, which there's a, a wash easement there that we really can't encroach too much on, especially when it comes to buildings, things like that. You can do that to some extent with trails, so they've gone a little bit into that wash with the trail, just to try and keep it away from that road as much as possible. And then it curves back here. You can kind of see that hatched crossing at the driveway. We tried to combine that with the sidewalk crossing to, again, eliminate those multiple crossings and trying to keep that as safe as possible and limit those conflict points. So, and then as far as landscaping goes, the streetscape, there's a specific streetscape plan that they need to follow, being adjacent to an arterial road. So they've done that using tree wells with bark mulch and some concrete borders. And then behind the sidewalk, about 10 feet, there's a, a small grass patch, and then zerriscaping with plants and rocks. So, so they followed that design pretty well. Then as far as the interior landscaping goes, they're following a similar pattern there with a mix of rocks and water-conserving plants. They're meeting the, the tree requirement for the parking lot trees and the interior trees as well. And then just kind of looking at some of the impacts. So lighting, the applicants provided a photometric plan, just showing how that lighting will work as far as light levels at the property lines. So the city code requires a few things with lighting. One is that it has to meet the lighting levels at the, at the property lines, which they can't exceed one foot candle power. This photometric plan shows them meeting that, so they should be good there. And then as far as the light poles themselves, any light poles within 150 feet of a residential district are limited to 15 feet. So that's kind of why you see the, the different poles there. So the, the yellow ones on the west side, those are within 150 feet of the residential district across the street. So those will be limited to 15 feet, and then the remainder, they can actually go up to 42 feet in the SC2 zone, but they've chosen to just go up to 20 for the remainder of the site. Then as far as some of the noise impacts, I did want to kind of address that as well. Most of those will be coming probably from the, the drive-through car wash there. So that is a permitted use, but they have situated that as far away from the residence as possible and kind of oriented that more towards the north-south, so that they don't get kind of a wind tunnel pointed towards, towards the residence. So it's kind of, kind of a way to mitigate that by placing that on the site the way they did. And then as far as the drive-through, the only other thing is just a speaker box. They've, they've had to kind of move that to the center just to deal with traffic stacking in case they get a lot of customers. They don't want to put the speaker box too close to the service area. But they've kind of oriented that to the south a little bit, again, to kind of keep it, keep that oriented away from the, the residence. So with that, staff is recommending approval of all three permits, the preliminary site plan, preliminary major subdivision, and the administrative conditional use permit. And I can answer any questions may have.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you. Could you please address the fuel storage tanks and how fuel storage will be handled on-site?
Yeah, so the, the fuel tanks, you can kind of see here, kind of close to that blue circle, those will be next to the wash. The utilities department was looking at that for, for separation from the wash. I believe they had to be 15 feet away, but yeah, they've, they've inspected that and it should meet that requirement.
If I'm not mistaken, the federal government controls regulations for underground storage tanks, do they not?
The state does.
Okay. Mr. Allen.
I remind, remind me, Mark, as we go through this, you'd mentioned essentially everything here is a provable use within the SC2 zone with the exception of the drive-through. So that throws the entirety of the thing into a conditional use. In other words, everything's on the table at that point, or are we only doing the conditional use on the drive-through?
So the, the conditional use permit is narrowly tailored to the use that is conditional. So in this case, it would be the drive-through.
Perfect.
So any conditions placed upon that would have to, again, be, be narrowly tailored to that use and the, any detrimental impacts associated with it.
And then taking a look at that, the detrimental impacts, as, as we've pointed out, they meet the stacking requirements. Everything else is good. So that's really the only thing we're looking at from the conditional use permit side of things.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Before we open for public hearing, I want to acknowledge that we did receive, the staff and the commissioners did receive an email from the Garbett Community. They identified six or so issues that they are concerned about, and those concerns have been duly noted. With that, how many of you are here to address this issue? Will you please raise your hands? None. Is there anybody online? Public hearing is now open.
There are some people online. I haven't seen any hands raised for this item.
If you're zoomed in, push star nine to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, push star six to unmute yourself.
No hands.
No hands. Still nobody here? Okay, then public hearing is now closed. Mr. Thomas?
If there's no other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
You may proceed.
Based on the informations and findings set forth in the staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for the Holiday Oil Fall Water Drive located at 80, or 7825 South Fall Water Drive in the SC2 zone with the requirements of approval listed on page two of the staff report. Do you want to do them separately then? Okay.
Mr. Hatch?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That first motion passes unanimously. Go ahead, Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary major subdivision for Holiday Oil Fall Water Drive titled specifically at Cold Stream Common Subdivision located at 7825 South Fall Water Drive in the SC2 zone with the requirements of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
Will you include the requirements of approval in there?
It's on the page two.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, last one. Based on the informations and findings set forth in the staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the administrative conditional use permit for restaurant, fast food, limited for Holiday Oil Fall Water Drive located at 7825 South Fall Water Drive in the SC2 zone with no conditions of approval as explained in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Motion, excuse me, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you all. We will proceed now to item number four, public hearing with planning commission recommendation to city council for final action for Copper Meadows. Presenting on behalf of Copper Meadows is Barrett Peterson. Go ahead. Come to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Thank you, yeah. My name is Jeff Seaman. I represent Peterson Development, and it's, it's good to be with you today. What we are proposing today is the Copper Meadows subdivision. It's located at 8200 South and Stokesley Drive. This is west of U-111, to give you some context there. This property is kind of an intriguing property because, and a difficult property to deal with from a development standpoint, because the south half of it is a former, a former gravel pit. And so part of the project goes into that gravel pit and and so it provides a challenging piece of property to develop. But with that said, we were, we brought this project before the commission last year and, you know, we did that a little hastily. We then went on to city council and was postponed. And we had a chance to go back and work with staff. And so I'd like to publicly thank staff, the planners, the attorneys who were in all of the meetings to to help us address this project and make it so that, so that it's a project that is worthy of their staff approval. So I'd like to thank them. So what is being shown on the screen right now is, to the right, is the plan that was submitted last year. And on the top left is the plan that we're resubmitting this year. So I, the reason I wanted to point this out is because it's important to see how this project has changed. Like, starting at the very north, it's kind of hard to tell, but that green area right by the road and tree nerve project, we thought that that was a, that would be a great place for a trailhead that could connect into the, some of the open space that this project would represent. The neighbors did not like that. They said, fine, if you don't want a trailhead there, we can, we can take that off and, and we can just leave it as is. So you see on the new, our new concept, that trailhead is no longer there. I bring that up because, you know, the neighbors had a lot of concerns on this project. And we, we were active in listening to them. Another one of their concerns is to, as you see on, on the, the new version, that dark green area that kind of has the lines squiggle through there, that the lines, there will be a future trail system. But that's going to be open space. That's a knoll that that has quite a bit of grade to it. And so in order to build the homes like we were proposing originally, or to develop homes up there, we would have had to cut into that hillside quite, quite significantly. So working with staff, we decided, you know, let's keep that open space. Not only does it keep it open space for trails or hiking or whatever to go through right there, but that also creates a buffer from the existing homes. What's interesting about this project, this subdivision, there's not a backyard fence that will touch an existing neighbor's backyard fence. Throughout the whole project, they just don't touch. That section right there between the existing homes to the north and what we're proposing kind of by that open space area has at least a 30-foot buffer. And that doesn't even count, that's like backyard fence to backyard fence. So there's a 30-foot gap in between there that the HOA will, will. So, so what we're trying to do is address the concerns of the neighbors to create a buffer from their project to our project. And, and you can see that throughout the project. Even on the east side, we have a park and our detention pond that, that will buffer the existing neighbors to the east and, and then some detention there on the southeast. So another one of the concerns of the neighbors was overall density. In, in our previous version, we were looking right at five units to the acre. And a lot of the density was kind of right in the middle of the project. You can see that. The neighbors who had talked to us said, what if you were to move the denser project, or products to the south of the property? And, you know, we took that into account and that's what we've done. You can, you can see the townhome section at the very south of the property and a lot of what we call the carriage homes in that area too. So, so we, we have proactively tried to address the concerns of the neighbors. Then overall density was an issue. Right, I mentioned that we were looking at, originally we were at five units to the acre, which would be mid-density, but now we are looking at, we reduced the overall unit count from five units to 4.2, a reduction of 58 units. 4.2 is considered a low-density project. So, you know, working with staff and making these changes has, has has allowed the staff and has provided them, with the staff report that you've seen, we have a minimum impact on the existing neighbors. They may not think it, but in reality, you're going to be hard-pressed to find another new subdivision that does not butt backyard fences, that creates a buffer and is a low-density project. This project uses good urban design by providing a variety of housing types, especially this missing middle housing type. When you're talking about housing affordability and stuff like that, this, this is a project and, and these products are able to sell. So in addition to providing valuable open space and parks for this community that are paid for by an HOA. So this will be a private, or this will be an HOA and they'll provide and maintain those, those public, or rather, those open spaces. So with, another thing that's interesting about this project is to access this project, the, these residents will not need to go through the adjacent subdivisions. 8200 South is a collector road. One of the interesting notes about the study, or one of the interesting notes in the traffic study is that with addition, this, this community plus the expected growth over the next 20 years, there wouldn't be, with all the expected growth, the study area intersections and proposed project accesses will continue to function with, with acceptable levels of service with no additional improvements needed. So you can have a baby tomorrow in 20 years, that baby's going to be grown and out of the house and there won't be any needed additional services for traffic in this area. So once again, the impact to the neighbors is minimal. Overall, this project is similar to the project. A good comparison is the U111 project that was, that was approved earlier this year with a variety of housing types. This one's a little bit different and doesn't use the integrated housing zone. It uses the PC zone. And the difference there is the integrated housing has a commercial aspect that is obligated to be part of that zone. The PC is up to the discretion of the city council if commercial is applicable in that area or not. This is an area that does not warrant a commercial use. There's a Holiday Oil right at the bottom of the, the U111. There's not much to the west of this. There's, there will be stuff to the south, but this is not a commercial area. So the PC zone allows us to, to work with that, so. So you can see that we, we have worked with staff. We have listened to, to the neighbors. We've, we've tried to address every concern and really this is a good project. We ask that you consider this and forward a positive recommendation to city council to approve this. And this low-density project that provides middle-income housing, or the missing middle housing that we're desperately in need of. So with that, any questions for me?
I don't see any, so we'll call you back if we need to.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Presenting for the city will be Taylor Jensen.
Great, thank you Chair Nguyen and Council, or Commission. I'm just going to go over this project a little bit briefly. If you want to have a stop and talk, just raise your hand or something, let me know and happy to stop and talk. Here we can see the vicinity map. There on the right side of the screen is where it is on the city and then that zooms out with that purple little triangle to show you a more close image. This is just the land survey. And as mentioned, there's an existing gravel quarry.
Taylor, I'm having a hard time hearing you, so there seems to be lots of air noise going on.
Is that better? Okay. So here we can see there's gentle slopes on the northern portion of the project, but as we move to the south, there's the existing gravel quarry. And that's what's reflected in the slope map that we can see here. So brief history on this project. Originally came in to us, applied in March of 2023. We had a design review committee in April, planning commission in November, and then that got held over till December 5th, where a recommendation of denial was presented. We went to the city council in December. And after public hearing, the project was remanded back down through the process. So to, to start over rather than to be denied. So we've worked with the applicant on this since that time. At that last meeting there in December, we had quite famously, I think, 17 deal points that were reasons why staff was recommending denial. And so as we've gone through this, I think this is proposal six or seven. We've worked through those until we were able to address all of those and feel like all 17 deal points were addressed. So we've already seen the master development plan. On that previous plan, you might have noticed it said conceptual. This is not a conceptual plan. This is the plan that will be built as long as they can meet city code. If they want to do any changes to this, they have to go through the codified development change process. Just kind of, this is how it started off. It was more of a bubble plan. So we really dug down and we wanted to see where those uses were going to go, where the units were going to go and where those roads are. So there's been a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure this is designed and well-thought-out. One of the unique things about the PC zone is it has some standard PC bulk standards, but it allows applicants to propose their own. And that is worthy of getting a recommendation from the planning commission that's ultimately up to the city council whether to approve those or deny those or to change those. So the applicant's proposed bulk standards are here on the board. It is good to know that driveways where they're going to have those are full-length driveways. So that's something that's very important to staff and I think the planning commission as well. Something that they also added that wasn't there last time is that side setback is a minimum of five and eight feet on each side of each home. And a five-foot setback has to be next to an eight-foot setback. So there's going to be 13 feet there between buildings. Now, this wall and fencing plan just shows where there are going to be some built separations as well. So those are along 8200 South and Stokesley. There'll be a six-foot masonry wall constructed with this project in those purple lines that you can see. So the project does require, by virtue of being in the PC, that 20% of the area is open space. They meet that. And of that 20%, they need to have 8% that is irrigated, programmed. And so those parks in the center and in the right, the top right, those do meet that 8% to meet that PC standard. You'll notice the lighter colored green, that is also open space. It was not counted as open spaces, those slopes are over 30%. So there is the eight-foot trail, which will continue along 8200 South and Stokesley Lane. Those will connect into existing city trails that are eight feet wide and that will continue as this moves down into Jones Ranch. We then have a 12-foot trail throughout the middle of the project and we have some soft surface trails as we work into that knoll and that open space in the hill. The applicant has just provided some examples of different elevations that they will be using. And they also have a standard in their master development plan that you can't use the same building elevation or colors next to each other or across the street. So where you're seeing those Xs, it's, you can't have that same house where you have that yellow, yellow box. And that's really important to kind of create a sense of place. It's not just 50 of the same cracker box houses built all in row. So what is being asked of the commission tonight? We're asking for a recommendation on the future land use map amendment on the Copper Meadows Master Development Plan and a rezone of 76.21 acres to the PC zone. We're also asking for feedback on the proposed law and bulk standards. Here we can see the current future land use map. It has various uses there. And moving this to the proposed still parks and open space, but that has been reduced and kind of covers their park area. And then what was formerly very low residential and public facilities is now low-density residential. We can see those next to each other here. This is current zoning on the property. There are three. The largest portion is very low, single-family residential. This is a west-side zone that we no longer use. There's a public facility zone and a low-density, single-family residential west-side zone, which is another zone which we no longer use. And the rezone request is to rezone the entire 76.21 acres to the PC zone. So just a project at a glance, it's 318 units. That's a 4.2 dwelling units per acre. The public, the next steps after tonight is this will have a public hearing and motion at city council for the future land use map amendment, rezone, master development plan. There's also an annexation process, which we are in the process of right now and we can talk about that more if you want, but that has been applied for, for well over a year. Pending that approval, this would need to come back with a major subdivision and a site plan. Those both would require public hearings at the planning commission and recommendations, or and approvals actually at the planning commission before a final approval at staff level. So some items for consideration that we wanted to just talk on about tonight. I think one that you've heard last year, you'll probably hear tonight, is this is PC zone. Your code requires PC zone property to be 200 acres. This is not 200 acres. How can you even consider this? But as you can see, the text of the code says, the city council at sole discretion determines that the surrounding neighborhoods will not be adversely affected. They can approve that, so they always have that option. But it's also worth noting that there's over 1,000 acres of PC zone property adjacent to this project. So we believe as staff that this meets the intent of the 200-plus acres regardless. But if the planning commission disagrees with that, you can still make a recommendation for against. It's up to the council to decide. That's their full authority. No one else's authority besides the council. So what we see here, just want to show those other PC zone properties. So we have 630 acres directly north, 605 acres directly south. And then as you move east on the other side of Baca, there's another 220 acres. One, one thing Larry also just wanted to mention that we do think is important as well is while we're looking at these PC zone, it does give us as a city more flexibility, more flexibility on where units are placed, but also it requires parks and open space, which there is no requirement if we do a standard R1 zone. So the stated purpose of the PC zone is to encourage imaginative and efficient utilization of land, the clustering of buildings and the integration of compatible uses. The mix of uses is encouraged in order to create a convenient, efficient and effective integration of uses. The code doesn't require commercial be within the boundaries of the project. That is a legislative decision. We as staff don't feel like it makes sense for commercial in this location. First, it's a little bit away from U111, but also as we've heard from the public a couple times, is traffic is a concern. And so by introducing commercial into the project, we would actually be exaggerating that concern of traffic by inviting more into the neighborhood. It's also worth noting that there's PC zone property with commercial property less than a quarter of a mile from this project, as we can see here. We also want to look at the project in context of surrounding development. And so directly south of this is Jones Ranch. It's 592 acres. They have an overall project density of five units per acre. When we look at that, we can see that red line on the top. That's roughly where Copper Meadows joins Jones Ranch. Village 10, which is 25 acres, has a density between one to three units. Where the larger portion of the adjacent property is Village 9, which allows up to ten units per acre. If both of those were to build at their full density, that would be 8.9 units per acre. If both of those were to build at their full density, that would be eight point nine units per acre. They could build up to eight hundred and ninety-two units adjacent. I don't think they're going to build that many units adjacent, but if we're looking at what is allowed by the Jones Ranch plan, this is less dense than what we're looking at for a large portion of that Jones Ranch development. All right. As we did last time, we evaluated the Sycamores. We looked at the thirty-one point seven acres that directly buffers this project. We counted seventy-one units with a density of two point two four dwelling units per acre with lot sizes ranging from just under a quarter of an acre to point nine one acres with an average lot size of point three five acres. In this project, all of the in this proposal, I should say, all lots adjacent to the Sycamores now are four thousand square feet or larger to well over ten thousand square feet. Two thirds of those lots that are adjacent to the Sycamores now have a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet. And the bulk of those are actually larger than eight thousand square feet. One of the concerns staff had last time as well was the applicant's proposal to do significant grading to that natural hillside, the one hillside in the area which remains to use that for their project with this new proposal that doesn't happen. And we preserve that hillside, which is something that we found important to our staff. It is worth noting that no lot that directly onto a new lot and open space is adjacent to the largest lots in the existing neighborhood. There will also be eighty-two hundred south and a new masonry, masonry wall, I should say, between smaller lots on the eastern side of the Sycamores. All right, so what we're here seeing here, that area highlighted is the area in the Sycamores that we looked at. Here's how it buffers. So that's been scaled to size. And that purple line is that masonry wall that will be going in. So as mentioned, those properties on the west side, there's at least a thirty foot gap between the back of those and the back of the other property line that would be open space. High Point is the property located to the east of this development. They're zoned R one eight, which is an interesting zone. It can be between three and five dwelling units per acre, depending on what the land looks like, how flat it is, how square it is and how you propose it. That is in line with the four point two dwelling units per acre of Copper Meadows. It's also separated from Copper Meadows by the sixty-seven foot Stokesley Drive, a wall and open space. So here we can see this is taken from High Point. That's just an example. That's four lots with the road running through it just over an acre. So four units per acre. We see that throughout High Point in quite a few places. Here you can see what High Point would go adjacent to. So there's open space and Stokesley, and then another open space to the north of that. And then again, you can see that purple line. That's also a six foot masonry wall. So there's quite a big separation there between the two of them. Now, one topic we've heard tonight a couple of times is missing middle housing. And this is a concept of housing range that are compatible in scale and form with traditional, single family homes located in walkable neighborhoods. These are really traditional form of development in the United States, which we saw kind of abandoned after World War Two and the rapid suburbanization. Since that development's really gone to the two poles of large lot, single family and high density apartments. Leaving a lot of these traditional step up houses that made walkable communities, but also attainable housing for younger people kind of gone. We don't have these that much anymore. And so this project does provide a lot of housing units that would be considered that missing middle housing, which is chronically underserved in West Jordan, Salt Lake County, Utah, the west of the United States and even the country as a whole. This is just an exhibit of the setbacks for those cluster lots, showing how those would work in addition to having two car garages. There's additional non-required parking spaces provided. And we've looked at snowplow storage areas as well to make sure that when we do have a winter event and they are plowed out by the HOA, that they're not going to be inaccessible. So with that, we are recommending approval of all three applications. I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Mr. Thomas.
A couple of them, and I think you've addressed some of them. And I know we talked prior to the meeting and this one's probably directed more towards Duncan. But where we're approving this and part of it, I realize just a small part of it is not annexed yet. Are we jumping ahead a little bit?
No, the annexation process is underway. It does not require a planning commission recommendation. It's thoroughly identified in the MDA and in the rest of the materials. So, no, it's anticipated that the council will look at potentially approving the annexation at the same time that they'll hear the other items, so.
Okay, I just want to chime in on that as well. It's also a requirement of approval that they can't develop any portion of the project they require on that annexed portion until it is annexed. So we do have that as a requirement of approval as well, that that does get approved and finished.
And that's right in the MDA as well, a provision that states that. So in the, in the instance that for whatever reason it is out of sync a little and the annexation is, you know, it's listed as a condition. It's perfectly appropriate that the council could prove everything else subject to that condition. The condition being that they can't, as Taylor mentioned, can't build those few houses in that area covered by the annexation until that's been approved, so.
Okay, and this one's kind of back to Duncan again. If we deny this tonight because of the seventy-six acres compared to two hundred or propose a negative response, the city council still can go ahead and and change that also, correct?
That's right. Regardless of your recommendation, everything, all of these applications, once you've made recommendations on each of the three applications, whatever those recommendations are, will go to the council. The council's able to uphold your recommendation and approve it as is or make changes to it and approve it, overturn it, whatever they want within their discretion. So that's correct. Part of, you know, part if part of it deals with the issue of the seventy-six versus two hundred, the council could still approve it if you didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hatch.
Taylor, could you just review the bulk standards that you referenced in your? Thank you for your, your report as well. It's very thorough. I'm just, would like to know what the developer is doing that's going above and beyond on those bulk standards that they normally would do in a PC zone? Or is it just pretty much cookie cutter, what a normal PC zone would use?
Yeah, it's fairly similar to what the PC zone would use. There are a couple areas where they're requesting slight reductions. So an example I can see off the top of my head is that alley loaded townhomes, their rear yard minimum setback. Or sorry, alley loaded townhomes, their front yard minimum setback is twelve feet instead of the twenty, which is required. That's because this is a rear loaded product. They want it to be loaded from the back and have the front be activated. So they're asking for, in those cases, for reduced setbacks. So I think every change that they do ask for is a reduction, but none of those are in relation to driveway lengths or separations on the side yards.
Commissioner Allen.
A lot of us were here ten months ago, well, over in that other building. I'm sure we all remember it. We were here until the nine oh five, if everyone remembers. But I just had the opportunity to go back through the minutes from that and thirteen pages, very well assembled, very detailed. My recollection, I just want to throw this out there and make sure I'm, I'm tracking everything appropriately. When we talked about this before, there was a negative recommendation from staff because at that point in time, it was probably a little bit too early. There were seventeen outstanding items that hadn't quite been answered. The, the master development agreement still needed to be put together or finished up. And and so long conversation, I think we all agreed that was the case. What I've seen then is that over the course of the last ten months, things have been retooled to manage those seventeen items. It sounds like they've been very robustly handled. And that brings us to where we're at today. Am I? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Seeing no more questions or comments from the commission, we will now open for public hearing. Let me state for the record that we did receive a lengthy email from Jake McNinch questioning a variety of things in this application. So we do have that as a matter of record. Let me ask, as we begin the public hearing, how many of you in the audience wish to comment on this application? Okay. With that number of people here to comment, according to section A three H of the planning commission bylaws, I have the authority as chair to move the agenda along and hold down redundancy by limiting the time allowed for comments. So with the number, and we do want, we want to hear from all of you. So what I'm going to do is to limit comments to two minutes per person. And hopefully with all of you here, we will hear all of your concerns. So you're welcome to line up at the microphone, state your name, and we will proceed.
Jake McNinch, West Jordan resident, and I do not appreciate that. Good evening. Thank you, planning commission, for your time tonight. I would ask the commission for five minutes as I represent a large group in the High Point neighborhood at Jordan Hills neighborhood. First, we appreciate you and the concern you have for our city. We also thank the planning commission and the countless hours Taylor and the staff have spent delving into this proposal. We would like to make the commission aware tonight that your own West Jordan staff report report fails to mention several city code and blatantly nullifies them using only opinion. Please allow the people to prove to you tonight that a recommendation of denial should be upheld using only city code and factual evidence. This proposal has many insignificant infrastructure issues and goes against several of the guiding principles found in the West Jordan general plan. We ask today that each of you vote a negative recommendation to the proposal and follow the unanimous citizen recommendation of denial. Today, I would like to hand deliver a petition in opposition to the Copper Meadows development by Peterson Homes. This petition has two hundred and ninety-eight signatures from constituents from West Jordan against the development. We feel that it would adversely affect the surrounding neighborhoods and that it is not compatible with the existing established neighborhoods. You can find details of the petition on page number two. We would also like to hand deliver a twelve page document using only city code and West Jordan Planning Guide to prove that Copper Meadows should not be zoned to the PC zone. We have application for referendum ready to go and volunteers to gather the eight thousand fifty-six signatures required. If planning commission should decide to forward a positive recommendation and city council approval of this, of this plan. We, the people, feel strongly that the PC zone is not appropriate for this land. As you heard tonight, thirteen dash five C states the minimum size for a planned community shall, shall be two hundred undeveloped acres, except that the city council may approve a rezone request of the planned community's own classification for a parcel of small.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you very much. I was, I allowed two minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, one additional thing. We know that all of you want to speak and we're happy to hear you. We do hope though that your comments will not be redundant. We want to hear all of them and want, want to hear the broad range of things. So hopefully you're not repeating yourselves too much. Go ahead, sir.
Brian Jones. City code thirteen dash seven C dash six states the criteria to recommend approval to any amendments of the general plan, including maps should be approved only if affirmative determinations are made regarding to each, not just a few of the following criteria are met. The first criteria is city code thirteen dash seven dash six states that the proposed amendment conforms to and is consistent with the adopted goals, objects and policies set forth of the current general plan. On page forty-nine, the general guarding guiding plan under master plan communities, it states the identity of the master plan community is achieved by the mix of commercial and residential land uses in a variety of housing types. Thirteen dash five C dash one states the purpose of the plant community zone to encourage imaginative and utilize the land through the clusters of buildings and integration of compatible uses such as residential, commercial and recreational. We ask the planning commission tonight, does this proposal achieve the identity of a PC zone with the integrated mix of commercial and residential? No, it doesn't. How many commercial aspects are there in this proposal? Zero. How many different housing types are there? Other than residential housing types, are there other housing types proposed? Zero. Peterson's proposal does not achieve the definition of what a planned community zone is. Terrain, the development to the south, the proposal has a gravel pit similar to this property, was on PC, but was required by city council to the general plan to have a commercial aspect. Jones Ranch to the south was zone PC and required to have commercial aspect. Sycamores to the north, the area was required to have a commercial aspect. Please do not treat this development in any different than the ones you have treated directly adjacent to the general.
Thank you.
SC Jones. Your staff report negates the city code and definition found in West Jordan general plan. The West Jordan staff report states the reason they're not requiring a commercial aspect is because we, the people, don't want the proposal to follow city code. This is not true. We've never said that. You recall meeting months ago about this. We never said we didn't want it to follow that plan. A justification from the staff report says city code thirteen five C one doesn't require a commercial aspect. It may be true, but it's been interpreted by staff and every development directly adjacent and the general vicinity, the same as that they have a commercial aspect. If the commission tonight decides to treat it differently, you'll be breaking code thirteen seven C six. The commission should not nullify the West general, West Jordan general plan or city codes thirteen five C five, thirteen five C one, or thirteen seven C six. It is a citizen's opinion that the developer is breaking the first part of code thirteen five C five and that the developer's proposal is being treated differently from what has been required on all other PC zones. We ask the commission to recognize that the West Jordan city staff report is negating these codes and that the developer is not following the definition of the PC zone. We, the people, recommend the planning commission motion for a negative recommendation as a proposal goes against the definition of and purpose of a PC zone and also against codes thirteen five C five, five C one, and thirteen seven C six and the general guiding plan. Just to break from this and give my opinion, something that's not quite factual. I do think the developer's heading in the right direction. However, the buffer is only buffering against one neighborhood as far as the high density goes. The neighborhood to the west against that orange spot, High Point is not even near that density. And that is just a stone's throw away to have four house.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Allen. I'm just going to give you some summaries from this information about just some numbers real quick. Seventy-six acres, ten acres, almost unusable land. Take out the twenty percent more that has to be designated as open space. And you have three hundred and eighteen units. And that equates to really a true density of five point three units per acre, not at all what their diagram shows where they show a real residential four units in a, in an acre. If you take out all the open space, the real density is five point three. Then you take out the unusable space, like the large, the extremely high grade slopes, and that increases your density even higher all the way up to almost seven density, seven units per acre. So the, the numbers they're saying are not true when you look at all of those factors combined. To, you know, to address the whole PC zone thing, this is really more just a way for a developer to maximize their profits because a PC zone lets them build the high density units in an area that is otherwise not designated for high density. It's the only reason they're going PC on this is because they want high density. You look at other high density issues, areas in the, in the issues in the area. If you go up seventy-eight south, you go into the Sycamores, especially during snowplow season, I don't think they've adequately addressed that because you have issues where the snowplows have to go around people because in high density areas, you have car after car after car after car lined up on the roads, blocking things like. car lined up on the roads, blocking things like snowplows, inviting things like crimes of opportunity and so forth. We're not insensitive to the idea that we need affordable housing. We understand that, but high-density housing is not the solution. We need more single-family homes that are starter homes, that are small, that are simple, that aren't elegant. That's what we need here, and that's why this zone of PC is not appropriate. We need a proper zoning to accomplish that.
Thank you.
My name is Megan Allen, and basically, West Jordan city codes 13-5-4 states in order to ensure due process and protect the rights of the citizens of the city, property shall be zoned in accordance with the designated future land use in the general plan unless it can be demonstrated to the city council that some other zoning classification is appropriate. The PC zone is not appropriate for the 76 acres of land that has several sensitive slopes. As you know, one of the requirements of a PC zone is that 20% of the total acreage be usable, be usable space. This requirement, however, within the PC zone is in fact leaving very little land for the developer to actually build on. It is forcing the builder to propose undesirable housing types such as townhomes that are not compatible with any of the existing developments that surround the property. This parcel has almost 10 acres of unusable land that cannot be used towards open space because of the dangerous grades. This forces the developer to take an additional 16 acres for open space. Please accept the following factual data points. 20% of 76 acres, oh, that math is wrong, sorry. 318 dwellings divided by 60 acres is 5.3 dwelling units per acre. Take out the annexation proposal of three acres that is unusable and the 7.8 acres that have been deemed dangerous slopes, and this proposal becomes seven dwelling units per acre. That's why this zone is not appropriate for this parcel of land. The development will not feel like normal low-density neighborhood in West Jordan. Perhaps, as Jay Thomas has stated in the last planning commission meeting, code 13-5C-5 and the regulation not to designate the land under 200 acres a PC zone was to avoid this exact thing, cramming too many people into a small space.
Hi, I'm Carrie Brown. We ask the commission tonight to see the proposal for what it really is, 76 acres that should not be designated to a PC zone. We ask that you realize that after fulfilling the open space requirements of the PC zone and taking out the additional 10 acres that cannot be used for open space, that it will leave no space for homes to be built because the acreage is less than 200. Please consider these facts and vote for recommendation of denial to a PC zone as the natural topography of the land can appropriately meet the requirements of the zone in grades or usability. A zone of such, sorry, a zone such as R18 residential would be more appropriate as it would not require the 20% open space requirement. It would also not require the annexation of unusable land that sits on an abandoned railroad. It would also be more compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods and have less adverse impact on them. We ask the commission to uphold the city code 13-5C-6, 13-54, and please vote no specifically to the PC zone. We now conclude our argument, did I stop? We now conclude our argument that the PC zone designation is not right for this land. We ask that you accept our factual data that shows why the PC zone applied to the specific land will adversely affect our neighborhoods. The 20% open space requirement is forcing the developer to propose unwanted and incompatible housing types such as townhomes. The development is under 200 acres. There is no commercial aspect like all other PC zones in the area, and the developer's utilization to fulfill the purpose of PC zone is flawed. With this, we conclude our factual argument of the PC zone is not appropriate because it has not met code 13-54, 13-5C-5, 13-5C-6, 13-5C-1, and is not being treated like all other PC zones in the direct vicinity.
Thank you.
If, if it's helpful for those people that will be speaking, the timer will be up on the screen. I believe there's a screen there, too, so hopefully that's helpful.
Is it ready? Okay. Good evening. My name's Wendy Love. We now, we will now prove why the R18 zone is more appropriate use of this land. High Point, the most recently developed development in the area and one of the borders directly to the east, is also zoned R18. The density allowed within this zone would also allow the same density that the developer is proposing. This would also allow the developer to follow city code 13-7C-6, which states that the proposed amendment would be compatible with other land uses, existing or planned. It would allow them to match exactly the lot sizes found in High Point. I think we could all agree that this is the zone, that this zone would be compatible with High Point to the east. One of the major problems with the staff found with the proposal just 10 months ago was the incapability with Jordan Hill neighborhood that buffers the property to the north. Your staff report reviewed the 31.7 acres of the Sycamores that are directly to the north and adjacent to this proposal. They found in this area that there are 71 dwelling units with a density of 2.24 dwellings per, dwelling units per acre compared to the 4.2 being proposed. They also found that the average lot in the upper Sycamores is .35 acres. This is 15,000, zero, four, zeros. I'm not sure that is SF compared to the average lot size in the Peterson's proposal being 0.06887 acres or about 3,000, 3,000 square feet.
Thank you.
The R18 zone would help the developer match at least the smallest lot sizes found in Jordan Hills neighborhood. It would nowhere near come close to the average size of .35 acres that directly buffer the project. We the people realize the R18 zone would be a compromise. We ask the commission to realize the fact that the PC zone is the wrong zone for this land, does not have any commercial aspect like other PC zones in the area, does not have 200 acres like the other PC zones in the area. It does not match the definition in the general guideline. The R18 zone would be a more appropriate use of the land for all parties involved. It allows for the same density, but it matches the average lot sizes of all existing neighborhoods. For this purpose, we ask the Planning Commission to motion a negative recommendation to this proposal and recommend a motion to zone this land R18. Under future land use in the West Jordan general plan, it states, land use designs must promote quality of life, safety, and good urban design. On page nine of the Peterson project context, they prove that the land use design will not promote quality of life or safety. They show an abandoned gravel pit which runs east to west, two-thirds of the way through the project. Peterson's slope analysis show that there are several sensitive man-made slopes found within the subject property. The West Jordan general plan states on page 45 that when sensitive slopes exist, that the very low residential zone using appropriate use is appropriate because higher density-
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Lopez, and per the definition found in the West Jordan general higher-density development in the, in the visable, planet does near not advise higher-density near sensitive slopes. However, on page 13 of Peterson, Peterson's master plan, it shows that the developer is going to put out 157 carriage homes and 54 townhomes right next to these sensitive slopes that are man-made and have over 30% slopes. In their last proposal, Jeff Seaman stated that the cost to mitigate these slopes are expensive and even implied that they would fix these dangerous slopes by taking dirt from the northwest portion of the property and making these slopes less dangerous. They are now proposing to leave these slopes and not take the dirt from the northwest portion of the lot. We ask that you follow the West Jordan general plan and promote safety over a land use that will benefit only the developer and not promote safety, but rather create a dangerous environment in the R-1-8 zone that would allow the developer to, the developer the opportunity to not put townhomes and high-density house, housing types in the next to 30% dangerous slopes that are man-made. On May 11th to 2022, the Salt Lake County Planning Commission enforced a sand and gravel pit located in the West Jordan County ordinance 5.214.030. The state, the state's a minimum of 200 feet foot buffered should exist between the sand and gravel pit to a residential development if the developer does not want to fully remediate.
Rich Willey, so one of the bigger problems that we have here that we're not really talking about very well is, is the fact that we do have a gravel pit that's, that's not being remediated. In 1997, Rob Reynolds requested a conditional use from it, and he made certain representations and promises to the city about the remediation that would occur is when, when that gravel pit was, was not being used. What we have now is, is a, is a gravel pit that hasn't been fully remediated and will not be fully remediated because as soon as this gets approved, there's, there's no incentive to remediate that anymore. And, and we're going to be left with, the city's going to be left with a big problem. I want to read a couple of comments from, from the minutes from 1997. Robert Money said that he was concerned about the eventual transition into low-density residential based on the, on the grades of the slopes. We know that we have compaction problems in this area. Those are very severe. And, and the remediation that's been proposed is, is not what, what was represented to the city 20 years ago. Approving this plan gives up all, all the city's leverage to get this fixed. It's going, going back to city code. The, the report, the city code's 13-7, 7C-6 talks about the, the impact of surrounding area. The staff report admits that the applicant is, is a sole beneficiary here. And while there, there is a good amount of, of discretion given to the city council, we can't read that code in a way that makes it annulity.
Thank you.
Colette Farr. Just on a personal note, I am a neighbor. This is my backyard. Peterson didn't talk to me, so I don't think they're being very upfront. And like they said, it's all for them. So on page 30 to 37 of the West Jordan City General Planning Guide, it talks about good urban design. The Copper Meadows proposal does not follow good urban design in many aspects. The definition of urban design is a process that is implemented by cities and towns to develop a relationship between people and their physical environment with a goal aloft the municipality being both functionality and aesthetically pleasing. The developer talks about open space and keeping natural topography. However, the reality is that he has designed a walking path through weeds on land that he doesn't want to develop because moving the dirt would cost too much. That land is right behind my house. I'm worried of what's going to happen, this little walking path. What will people do up there? This is a fire hazard. This is dangerous. This is not functional and is not aesthetically pleasing and does not fulfill the goal aloft the municipality. This proposed un-groomed open land area, 16 acres, will have all the noxious weeds you can imagine, and it does, and will serve as a garbage collection site, a fire hazard, and be a liability to the community, not to mention the 7.8 acres that has unsafe slopes and posted danger signs. If the mounds were to ever catch on fire, this natural open land becomes a danger to society. This open land does not follow guidelines laid out in the city general plan and does not fulfill the goals of the city. In the West Jordan Planning Guide for the city, it talks about how good urban design can facilitate social health. Copper Meadows' proposed development does not facilitate social health. There are no amenities for social health.
Greg Kitchen. We can now conclude that the Copper Meadows proposal does not meet the first criteria in city code 13-7C-6 as it does not conform to and is not consisted with the adopted goals, objectives, and policy set forth in the current general plan, and does not use land design to promote quality of life, safety, and good urban design. We ask that the Planning Commission agree with our in-depth analysis for the first guiding principle that staff found applicable. The staff report does not mention, and upon further investigation, and the staff didn't even know, there was a bond remediation fund for this property until we the people pointed it out. Please trust in our in-depth analysis. Staff simply use their opinion to say that this project constitutes good urban design because the bulk of the density is directed towards land formerly used for the gravel operation that needs to be remediated. This statement, in fact, goes against the general guiding plan as it advises to not put higher density such as townhome and carriage homes near sensitive slopes. Staff go on to say that this proposal will preserve undeveloped and disturbed hillsides. According to their proposed grading plan on page 10 of the project context, it appears that 23 homes will disturb the west, disturb the western portion of undeveloped hillside. It also appears on page 12 of the master plan that seven-point acres will be disturbed that have created dangerous grades of 30% or more. The only preservation that is happening is an un-groomed garbage collection site and fire hazard on the northwest corner. We, unlike the staff, have been more detailed and pointed out things that it failed to research. We have shown you, using only city code, guiding principles, and county ordinances, why the proposal does not meet the first criteria in city code 17-7C-6. According to the staff report opinion and an-
Thank you.
According to the staff report opinion and analysis that we have just gone through, Planning Commission cannot make an affirmative decision that this criteria and principle is being met. Opinions of the city staff are good. We appreciate them, but the factual data should always be precedent over opinion. Please consider this before making your recommendation. In the West Jordan general plan, it states, general land use map is the will of the community and presumed correct. Developers have the burden of proof on way, on why the general plan should be changed. I know you guys, I can see little side conversations and you guys are looking off. I know it's a lot of the same stuff. You asked not to be repetitive. I appreciate the eye contact at this moment. I'd like to say that I live on Cricket. I would like to say that no one else has talked to me, and I do not approve of this. I would, as a member of the community, I deny this personally. I would like to say, as a government, we are here, right? You guys are here for a purpose. I appeal to you as human beings. There's a reason why we have a commission of a different, diverse group, and it's not just one city employee saying, yes, this is it. No, this is not. I appeal to you guys right now to say, please give me the human aspect of this and understand the time and the effort that we have put into this because this is our home. This is our forever home. I don't know if any of you live in this neighborhood. I've never seen you in my neighborhood, but this is our forever home. My children live here. My children walk home to school, from school, on these streets. Please respect our opinion. Please give us the respect of paying attention as we're talking. I don't like to be confrontational. I don't like to be mean, but when you guys limit our time and tell us certain things and then have side conversations, it's very upsetting to me as a citizen of West Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle McNinch. The general land use map currently shows twenty-three point six acres as park, twenty-two point five nine acres as very low residential, and then also another twenty-two point five nine acres as very low residential. Copper Meadows is proposing four point two dwelling units per acre, which does not fit the very low residential category as defined by the West by West Jordan. We, the people, conclude from this factual information that Copper Meadows is not compatible with the general use land map and that they are asking for an unreasonable land map use change. Please allow me to remind you that the West Jordan Land Use Map was adopted and very recently updated at the end of twenty twenty-three. The residents from all over West Jordan staff and several people spent many hours giving input and getting this just right. If the residents disagreed with the proposed current zoning or plan for this land, this would have been voiced when the general land use map was recently being amended. As Taylor said in our last planning commission meeting, while the general land use map is a living document, it was just completed and adopted. We would like to pose the question, what is the purpose of a general land use map if we're not going to really honor it? Just because there's no plan right now to develop the land map as portrayed does not mean that in the future it won't be. We ask that the planning commission uphold the recently adopted general use general land use map plan and vote for a recommendation of denial to the proposed general land use map change as it has as it is not compatible. The general plan defines that very low-density residential uses are appropriate as a buffer between higher-density, single-family del- development and dedicated open lands or hillsides where sensitive slopes make higher-density developments inadvisable. I ask the planning commission tonight, is there a better zone that depicts the tip?
Thank you.
Young. There are sensitive slopes that run the entire distance from east to west that have danger signs, yet the developer wants to put the highest-density-type housing, carriage homes and townhomes, right next to it. Staff opinion on this principle is found on page nine and states that a future park won't come to fruition. This is contrary to one, the opinions of thousands of residents, and two, staff opinion when general land use map was adopted in twenty twenty-three. If this is not how we wanted to develop the land, then why was it adopted as such just one year ago? The people of West Jordan that surround this neighborhood and residents from West Jordan feel is not compatible with the general plan. We ask the commission to uphold the staff report by leaving this very low residential or low residential with R one dash eight entitlement. With this, we can now conclude that the general plan is the will of the community and presumed correct and that the developers have not shown us why the PC zone is better and more appropriate than very low residential. Under land use guiding principles in the West Jordan Plan, it states the land uses decisions by guided by the general plan to protect existing land and uses and minimize impact to existing neighborhoods and should be compatible with existing neighborhoods in the vicinity. In regard to this principle, the staff report under staff opinion section, it states that this will have minimal impact on the neighborhoods that are existing. However, the data they used to prove this is actually the exact data they used to also recommend denial just eleven months ago. In fact, in the section last year, staff report found in the Jordan Hills neighborhood or Upper Sycamores was not compatible with this proposed development. They reviewed thirty acres that was directly buffered to this to the north and found the average lot in the Upper Sycamores is point three five acres compared to the average lot size on the Peterson's current proposal being point zero six eight acres or about three thousand square feet. Your own staff report states that two-thirds of the lots in the Lower Sycamores are point one acres, which-
Thank you.
Can we get your name? I didn't hear your name.
Alicia Ned, which is still double the average lot size proposed by the Peterson Group. We are asking that you trust your own staff and the report that they provided you, which shows this proposal is not compatible with the existing neighborhoods. The Jordan Hills neighborhood, in fact, has much larger lots and follows a traditional pattern of development within West Jordan that places large lots along the west boundary. The project density is nearly double that of the Sycamores north of the gravel pit that they reviewed last year. You have also heard from a large number of residents in the neighborhood that feel this proposal will have a negative impact on their neighborhood. You also have a petition signed by constituents of West Jordan that agree that this proposal will adversely impact surrounding neighborhoods. Staff asked the developer ten months ago to rethink the development utilizing density and built environments types similar to the Sycamores north of the gravel pit. They simply ignored this advice. They came back with an average-sized lot of three thousand square feet, but yet the staff's opinion is suddenly changed because they added ten lots. It will be ten thousand square feet that buffer the Jordan Hill neighborhood. This is not an acceptable proposal to we, the people. We propose a compromise of an R one eight zone that allows the developer the same density he is wanting, but requires the lot sizes that are more compatible to the existing neighborhoods that directly buffer the project. Please interpret the data how staff interpreted it just eleven months ago and vote for a recommendation of denial of this proposal and motion the land be zoned for an R eight, R one eight zone. In the staff report, it says it has anticipated to have little impact on the Hyde Point neighborhood directly to the east of this development. However, staff report did not include the following data points. Hyde Point neighborhood is made up of one hundred and seventy-two dwelling units with a density of three point one two dwelling units per acre with the lots ranging from point one five acres to point four one acres with an average lot size of point one ac- one acres compared to the average lot size of Copper Meadows, which is point zero six eight acres or three thousand square feet. Per city code through thirteen seven C six and land guiding principles, when comparing land, we should compare what is existing, not what the buffering existing zone could allow for. Hyde Points is-
Thank you.
Soraya Heard. In fact, in what currently exists in zone is three point one two dwelling units per acre. As the principle states, land uses should minimize the impact to existing neighborhoods and not what the developer could have built in these existing neighborhoods. Staff report is not comparing developer could have built in those exist- existing neighborhoods. Staff report is not comparing existing. They are comparing what buffering zones could have allowed. The very low residential zoning that is currently zoned on this land is actually more appropriate and matches what is existing in Hyde Point in dwelling units per acre. We ask that you agree with the analysis and conform to the fact that your own staff report neglects comparing existing dwellings units per acre instead of comparing what adjacent neighborhoods could have built but did not. We ask the commission to please agree with more accurate analysis, which shows this is not compatible with Hyde Point development to the east. Copper Meadows is not compatible with the with what Jones Ranch is proposing along the Ocker Mountains. Please let us use facts found in the Jones Ranch Master Development Plan and your staff report. Jones Ranch, which buffers on the south side directly adjacent to the project in the question, has the following entitlements. Village ten is twenty-five acres and is designated as low-density, which allows for between one point five to two point nine dwelling uh units per acre. Villages eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, as you continue Southland Jones Ranch Development, which buffer the Ocker Mountains directly, allow no more than three units per acre. I would just like to ask that you allow us to um have exactly what was zoned before we moved into this neighborhood. Um I know you guys wouldn't appreciate something coming to your neighborhood when you knew that it was going to be a certain way when you were moving into it. So the way it was zoned before was exactly how we wanted it when we moved into the neighborhood, and I ask that you take that into account. Um also, that people are renting, and so there's not enough room for um parking cars.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you here here who have commented. We appreciate your thoughtful comments. We now need to open the hearing to people who may have joined us on Zoom or by phone. Is there anybody? By Zoom, star nine to raise your hand. On phone, star six to unmute. If you joined by Zoom, star nine to raise your hand. By phone, star six to unmute. I think by Zoom, they would just raise their hand, right? So yeah, there's a button there. By Zoom, just raise your hand.
I don't see any hands. Wait. Um. Kayleen.
Sounds like we have somebody on Zoom. Go ahead.
Kayleen.
Kayleen?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Go ahead.
I just want to thank the residents that came out to speak to you tonight. It takes a lot of courage for our residents to come out and speak. So I just want to tell them thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Nate.
Nate?
Hey, uh yeah, uh my name's Nate Benvorhees. I live in Hyde Point neighborhood, and I just wanted to to say, you know, the farther out you usually go west, the larger the houses get. And we hit that fence where you can't get any any larger, um at least in the previous neighborhoods, and it's kind of frustrating to build out this direction, thinking that that's how it's going to be and that everything is zoned that way. And then to have that completely changed and um so I just I just want to let it be noted that it is frustrating this whole process, um how we're not getting land that's remediated. We've got the thirty percent slope greens areas that are expected to be used. So the whole process is just a little bit frustrating, and um the fact that we're just packing in more and more space to make it so that that's available. Uh even though it could be could have been remediated by either the gravel pit or remedied mediated in a better way to be usable. It's just uh kind of frustrating that we're kind of stuck with that and stuck with this plan from Peterson. Um and that's just all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
There's there are no other hands raised.
Okay, and then we will consider public hearing now closed. It's time for questions and comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Thomas.
Hi, um after listening to all the comments and doing a little research, that's one of the things we were kind of going back and forth as far as on the PC zones, whether commercial was a mandatory subject or not, and it is not. It's recommended, but it is not a requirement. Um with everything that I've seen on line as far as looking at city codes and stuff, I think the developer is heading in the right direction. However, I still personally have issues with the acreage on the PC zone. I know that it'll be resolved with the city council and but I would vote no on that just for that reason alone. Um I think they're not quite ready yet. We're close. It's a lot better project than what it was ten months ago, but I don't think we're quite there.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Chair. Um I also agree that Peterson has really done a lot of work to bring this into more of an alignment. And I think the PC zone actually works better than an R one eight zone would because it allows for more variety and it allows for um homes to be built where they are more suitable. I also want to thank the residents for coming out, and for those of you who shared your own heartfelt comments, those are the ones I listened to. So I appreciate those of you who added how you felt about this. Um uh the comments that were provided by Jake, I read through his email previously and also this time, and those comments were repeated again. So I did hear your comments too, Jake, from you and all the other residents, but again, those were repeated. Um and I also read through your email. So the heartfelt comments meant something to me, and I appreciate that you took the time to come out here and say something. And I I also think the I think the PC zone works here simply because it matches what's to the north and south and what Jones is already doing, and it just sort of fits in with everything. And plus, it allows the developer the opportunity to create green space, and I recognize that there is a portion of it that is thirty percent gray, but there's also a larger portion of it that is open space that is under that thirty percent grade. Thank you.
Commissioner Allen.
Uh could I just ask the staff a handful of questions? When we say seven units per acre, is that considered medium density or high density?
So seven units per acre would be medium density, but it is important to understand that we calculate density in West Jordan on a gross basis.
Correct. Thank you. Uh and then could you just comment on the gravel pit remediation?
Yeah, so um first, we'll go back to that nineteen ninety-seven conditional use permit, something that wasn't for this property. Um we've looked into it. It's parcel number twenty thirty-three four hundred zero one four. It's addressed as eighty-three hundred South Baca Highway and eighty-four point nine acres. If you look at the property directly south of this, has the same parcel number, has the same acreage, and it has the same address. So that's what the conditional use permit was for. Uh through our records, and we did uh some searches, we were able never able to find a conditional use permit for this site. So it's our understanding that um if that ever happened, we don't have record of it. And also, there is no bond that is for this site, so uh want to tou- touch on that. Also, we heard a lot tonight that there is not going to be any remediation with this, and this project would require remediation. That's uh for all that development they're doing, they will have to remediate the site, and that's partly why it makes more sense to have that higher-density development there in the gravel pit area is because that's going to require significant work still to be done and for that to be remediated. Um if this project weren't to be approved and nothing built there, the site would remain unremediated, but through the development, that is the way that we can remediate the site.
Great. Thank you. So uh with that, uh I agree absolutely with Commissioner Hatch. Uh if you didn't see our eyes, because at least my eyes, because it was because I was following along on everything that you were reading uh as well as looking up the city code that was being referenced throughout. So I apologize if that wasn't the case. I do appreciate especially the uh the non-read comments that were very specific and took notes, and so thank you. The um city code, uh section thirteen five C one talks about the various uh planned residential developments, and PC zone is part of this. Part C says, "In part, it is the intent of this section that the control exercised be the minimum necessary to achieve the purpose of this chapter." And then it explains some of those cha- those purposes are to create more attractive, more desirable environments in the city, allow a variety of uses and structures, provide flexibility in the location of buildings on the land, so on and so forth. It is my opinion going through that staff has very effectively and accurately looked at this, and I absolutely side with that. With the the uh document that was read by the community today, asked repeatedly to look at the facts, and I've done that. And the fact is, I don't agree with what was read by the community. I think this is absolutely one hundred percent exactly what this was, that what the zoning was created for. I think it's a very effective, very well uh laid-out development, and I'm a hundred percent, hundred percent before.
Commissioner Allen.
So if there's no other comments, I'd be happy to make a recommendation.
No, I I have a comment. Um before we uh take this to a vote, let me remind all of you of the um obligation of this commission. We don't have a lot of latitude in what we do. We don't have the same latitude that the city council has. What we have is a set of criteria, and if an application meets the criteria, we are obligated to support that application. Am I saying that correctly, counsel?
Right, uh I would make one clarification that unlike your other items on the agenda today, the previous application was purely administrative uh applications, right? With a conditional use permit, site plan, subdivision plat. Uh these are all recommendations to the city council, right, for an MDP and rezone and land use map amendment. So even though you you have even though you have limited discretion, you still can go through those criteria. And using the criteria, you can give either a positive or negative recommendation. Just that, as you remember, the way our code's written, that in- that in order to give a negative recommendation, you have to find that at least one of the criteria has not been met. If you're giving a positive recommendation, you're finding that all of the criteria have been met. And typically, if you're finding a negative recommendation on at least one of the criteria, you need to take evidence from the record and identify what it is that you're basing that negative recommendation on that one criteria on. And not that it's just out of nowhere, but there's actual facts that support a negative recommendation on at least one criteria, which then allows you to provide a negative recommendation overall for that, for that application.
Okay, thank you. With that, are there any other questions or comments by the commissioners? The questions I had were asked by others, so I'm not going to ask them again. So I think we're ready to entertain a motion. Mr. Allen.
I move that the Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval, a positive recommendation, to the city council for the proposed Copper Meadows General Plan Amendment, amending the future land use map, FLUM, from future park, public facilities, and very-low-density residential to low-density residential and parks and open land, subject to the requirements of approval. Being any increases and/or improvements necessary to provide utility service for the additional entitlement shall be memorialized in the development agreement and paid for and constructed by the applicant.
Commissioner Hatch.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Sorry, did I hear two nays? Vote is five to two, five in favor, two against. Commissioner Allen.
I move that the Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval, positive recommendation, to the city council for the Copper Meadows Master Development Agreement Plan, subject to the requirements of approval, as shown on, is it page two of the staff report? That sounds correct. Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Before we proceed with the next motion, we need to backtrack a little bit. Those who voted against the first two motions need to state for the record the basis for their opposition.
I just don't think they meet the requirements as far as it fitting in with the neighborhood adjoining.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I also feel that they don't fit in with the adjoining neighborhoods.
I do believe we need the criteria. Is that correct, Duncan? We need to know which criteria is not being met.
No, not for this purpose. It's just if somebody was making a negative motion. This was a motion to give a positive recommendation to the council, so you don't need to identify specific criteria because by definition, you're saying that all the criteria are met. But if the motion would have been made for a negative recommendation, then the motion should have included at least one criteria.
Got it.
The factual evidence why. For this purpose, that's sufficient.
Okay, my error. Thank you.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval, positive recommendation of the Copper Meadows rezone of 76.21 acres from very-low-density single-family residential, public facilities, and low-density single-family to planned communities, subject to the requirements of approval in the staff report.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion is five to two. Thank you once again, all of you, for being here. We appreciate your interest in our community. Let me remind you that we too are just citizens of West Jordan, trying to do the best we can. Mr. Thomas.
I move that we adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.